Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll have our coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirvano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Scibay, though. With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod and Connor, who are working behind the scenes to help with our broadcast on Channel 20, and promising me that our microphones are going to work tonight.[74.64][74.64](laughter) All right. So, our first thing on the agenda tonight is, we have to have a public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 1819 amendment budget, amended budget, but we have no speakers who have submitted any comment cards on that topic, so we do not need to conduct that business. So, at this time, we'll move right into recognizing and celebrating outstanding contributions of our students and staff, and Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. may have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Board members. Tonight, as we are always, always happy when we get the opportunity to recognize our outstanding student athletes, and particularly when they compete at the state level. So, this evening, first up, we have IESA Boys Wrestling. Two RPS students qualify for the IESA State Wrestling Tournament in March. Lincoln Middle School 8th Grader, Kasim Ali, won the IESA Class AA, the Cal Sectional, at 119 pounds to advance to the state competition. Flynn Middle School 8th Grader, Mason Crowe, also advanced to the state competition after taking second in the 155-pound Division X Sectionals. At the state tournament at NIU, Kasim and Mason each picked up wins before losing in WrestleBax. Not sure what that is.
Okay.
Congratulations on your outstanding seasons, and we hope to see you return to state competition next year in high school.
All right.
And these gentlemen are here tonight. Please join me in congratulating them for their accomplishment.[187.62][187.62](applause) Their coaches.
Congratulations.
Give it up for the coaches.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Great job.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Hey, by the way, Coach Ryan Knackriner just wrote a great blog on the 205 vibe about Mason Crowe, so if you haven't seen that, please go check that out. Thank you, Mr. Zetaker. The Auburn Knights, we have some big-time champions amongst us tonight. This team is absolutely amazing. That's just me ad-libbing, but let me get back to the script. The Auburn Knights are no strangers to the IHSA State Finals. In fact, Auburn Scholastic Bowl team made its 18th consecutive trip downstate in March to once again compete for the state title. Right? This is becoming like old hat.
Yeah.
The Knights placed second in 2018, and they won the competition in 2008 and 2015. The championship this year could not have been closer. It ended in a tiebreaker, sudden death, with a science question. The Knights lost 430 to 390 to the University of Illinois Laboratory High School from Urbana in the title round, but they still brought home the second-place trophy and a whole lot of pride. The team includes Captain Ethan Strombeck, Leaf Verace, Lily Chavez, Justin Abel, Luca Barber, Andy Granath, and Henry Thomas. The team is coached by Neva Gay Abel and Linda Green. Congratulations to these incredible students and their coaches for continuing their streak and bringing home a second-place title. Please congratulate the Scholastic Bowl.[348.02][348.02](applause)
Amazing job. Congratulations. Very proud. Very proud of you guys. Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations.
Amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Congratulations.
I'm so proud of you guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your coaching.
All right.
Okay.
I just read what they told me, too. But you know what?
Linda, thank you so much for all you do. So long.
Such a proud tradition.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for all you do. We just, we, breaking news, we have some additional information that needs to be shared.
Okay.
Oh, I thought this was included in the information that they-
Oh, please, I'm sorry. First, tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm Anne Walden. I'm Leaf Verace's mother.
Okay.
They are going to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia in May, as well as in Washington, DC in June.[437.74][437.74](applause) Two, two different national competitions that they've qualified for for how many years?
Many years.
Many years, and they placed, you could tell me how far they placed throughout the years. Yes.
So, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Amazing. Absolutely amazing.
And one more. You see, we share the microphone. I know you have something else as well about Ethan Strombeck. Please.
Yeah, Ethan couldn't be here tonight. He's out California at college visit, and I think his plane flight was delayed getting back, but this past Sunday, there was a national tournament in, at the Hyatt Regency in Rosemont for individual players to compete in Quizbowl, and Ethan came in first in the nation.
Amazing.
How about that? And that is all. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful news. Okay, we will move on then to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names at once, the person whose turn it is to speak, and the following second person. If you would come up to the front so that we can make our time as efficient as possible. We have a clock on the wall to help you with your two-minute timing, and we thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first public speaker tonight is David Woosley, to be followed by Nancy Godowski. Could you check to make sure the mic is turned on there? There we go. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, my name is David Woosley. I teach health and physical education at Guilford High School, where I am the head boys and girls tennis coach, head wrestling coach, and the vice president of the Booster Club. I am here to share my concerns over the plan to demolish the five courts at the Guilford Tennis Center, part of the plan you'll discuss later tonight. The Guilford Tennis Center has long been a destination for tennis players of all ages in our community. Guilford has nine good courts and five courts that need upgrades. Those nine courts are in high demand. I see this every day when I ask community members, who are the Rockford taxpayers, to leave the nine courts to make room for our practices and matches. In the spring, our problem is even greater, since the Guilford Courts are also used by the Eisenhower Middle School, excuse me, tennis program, which adds 40 or more students needed nearby space. I understand our financial limitations, and I'd like the opportunity to work with the local tennis community, who is just now hearing about this plan, and this administration to help options that don't end in the removal of the five tennis courts. I am asking the school board to slow down the process and consider what other options might be best for Guilford, Eisenhower, and the community. Let's have a discussion and consider other options to keep the Guilford Tennis Center a destination for Rockford tennis and for our students.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Nancy Godowski is next, to be followed by John Torrance.
We still need a Vera Dusk here. Even though I don't always agree with you, I want to thank the duly-elected Board for the many hours you contribute to RPS, especially since you are unpaid, unlike the city alderman. However, I have some concerns I'd like to share. You knew I was going to do that. Test scores are tanking. Paid administration comes up with more consultants outsourcing and expanded bureaucracy as solutions, or paid patronage. I'm from Chicago, so I know what that's like. Students still can't read, do not have basic arithmetic or spelling skills when they enter high school. The one reading program that worked in high school was reduced to only 9th grade this year, so not all the grades are included. People closest to students, parents, teachers, paras, bus drivers, food service, and principal are afterthoughts. The highly-paid top administrators should be meeting regularly with these stakeholders. Another concern is the lack of functioning Board committees, education, finance, and operations. Now they are a combined committee as a whole, basically a watered-down version of a school board meeting. Top administrator basically sets the agenda and has his administrators push through his own agenda. He appears to have complete control of everything, even committees, while this duly-elected school board has been reduced to mere participants. Also, while test scores are tanking, one construction company's profits have risen by millions. In what, in what disrespect one person can exemplify duly-elected officials who have a constituency they represent? What a disservice one person can do to an educational institution. The taxpayers and Board gave him the tools he needed to achieve. He has squandered these tools and not achieved his goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. John Torrance.
Hello. I am John Torrance. I represent the community, the tennis community. When that, the courts were done at Guilford, we formed a group called Transform Tennis out of Rockford, you know, transform Rockford. We use a lot of the methods in our strategic planning, et cetera. Some of the things that we accomplished was, one, we actually did the programs required by the USTA. We did them at Auburn on the summer, and we had various kids there and stuff in order to get the grant money to the school district. We also have worked with the middle schools, having adults there. Even at Marshall, we had them out at the parking lot, where we set up nets and stuff for the kids, because they had 60 kids that wanted to play tennis with two courts. We've as well worked, collaborated on the court surface that was done, so that it was, the courts were appropriate. I think it was a good compromise on the surface that we did, and there was open collaboration. We asked that we be allowed to help you collaborate with Coach Woosley and the Guilfords, who want to restore, keep those courts. That is a very big asset to the community in many ways, which we could describe in the future, and look forward to working with you on that to see how we could save those courts for the future kids. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thank you all. I'll ask you this time, if there are any Board member comments. Mr. Connor.
So, Nianya, I got my light on first.
Okay.
So, I'm going to be the one that's going to say that the, there was a program today that honored student ambassadors at the elementary level. It was fabulous. Those students are fabulous. I really encourage the public to take a tour and experience just how excellent all those students are at, I think, virtually every elementary school. So, it was a real privilege to be there today, and, and again, students were great, and a lot of parents were there. And again, really thanks to those parents, because they're really obviously encouraging those students. Thanks to the staff, the principals. So, really, great program, and really hope it goes forward as well as it is now.
Great. I had that on my list. Mr. Dixon?
That's all I was going to say.
That's what you were going to say. Okay.
Yeah, you just beat us to it.
Ditto.
Yeah, ditto. That's why you hear you push the thing.
All right. It's a wonderful time today. I just would like to make a comment that, you know, several years ago, Dr. Vosberg kind of talked to us about a city in Michigan that was doing some scholarship promises for students. Remind me the city. Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo. And so, we thought it could never happen in Rockford, and so, with the help of a whole bunch of community members, and Susan Fumo from the Cabinet, and Dr. Vosberg or whatever, I think maybe the first year, what, third year now of scholarships, fourth year, maybe?
This is, this will be the third year of full scholarships.
I think the first year, we had three scholarships that were awarded, I think if I remember right. It was pretty small. Well, on April 26, Rockford Promise is going to give out 30 scholarships to Rockford Public School graduates worth $280,000 in scholarship.[1064.83][1064.83](applause) So, that, that's probably about a tenfold increase in three years. So, and I will be there, and so, it's just wonderful to see how this has grown, and I want to thank Elaine Breck and her Board from Rockford Promise that do a great job in reaching out to the community, because this comes back to this community and supports our mission of making this a better place to live. So, really thrilled about the, so, April 26, I think it's at Rock Valley this year.
3:00 PM.
Yeah, 3:00 PM on the 26th at Rock Valley. So, you'll see press coverage, I'm sure about that. So, any other Board comments? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following: the meeting minutes of March 21, 2019, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log, and travel, the bid recommendations for masonry restoration at Jefferson, Guilford, and Eisenhower Schools, as well as the masonry restoration at Brookview, Nashville, Byer, and Carlson, and the oil bid for school buses, the recurring contracts for the extended-day program, programming for the summer of 2019, the Illinois Association of School Administrators for, on behalf of Welsh and Carlson Elementary Schools, the Center for Sight and Hearing Impaired for Special Education Services, the workers' compensation settlement agreement with WH, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
9A.
Okay. Mr. Siegel?
10A.
Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Oh, your microphone didn't work.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion for 9A, which is the masonry restoration at Jefferson, Guilford, and Eisenhower.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rollins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Just want to use this as an opportunity to ask my favorite question. Does this include sealing and power washing, then?
Mr. Phillips is in the back.
No.
No, okay.
This does not include sealing or power washing at this time. We have included, in our fiscal year 20 budget, $60,000 to start this process on an annual basis, but it's not included, or was not included, in the original facilities master plan budget.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the IFB for masonry restoration at Jefferson, Guilford, and Eisenhower.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
We had it. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
And I'll take a motion and a second for 10A, which is the extended-day programming for the summer of 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, thank you. It seems like on the PDSA, there was no need to, under implementation, to partner with any of the departments, like the Deputy Superintendent, or Executive Director of Academics, or Communications, but it seems like this is a program that could benefit greatly from partnerships with those departments. Yeah, I know that there is, they're not maximizing capacity, so perhaps in partnering with Communications, they could get better student and family engagement. And by partnering with the Executive Director of Academics, they might have a better chance of aligning the curriculum in these programs with what our students really need, and perhaps they do actually have these partnerships, but in the PDSA, it just didn't say that there was any. And I see that Dr. Wolf, oh, hey, Dr. Wolf is here.
Yeah, there he is.
Hi, Dr. Wolf.
Okay.
Thank you. By definition, in that, the partnership, they're not, they're responsible for making it work, but we certainly do work with all of those departments. We free, we transport students, we give them supplies, so everybody's involved. We work with Ms. Angela Hay Carter to ensure that dates and everything are aligned, but in terms of this program, we make sure that we get all of the registration forms. We've sold out the previous seven years.
I, it would just be helpful to me if there were some digestible way to get that information. I did read all of the documentation that was attached to it, and some of it was quite ancient, which I was going to ask about that, too. Is there some reason why the most recent data was, I think for 2015, 2016?
2016, 2017.
Okay, 2016, 2017. Is it just it takes so long to do all the federal reporting that it, it's hard to get this information together?
No, great question. So, when we reported on the DEA, the discovery and assessment, they actually had four tests that we were able to give, and so, we used Test C at the end of the year, like we do now with NWEA in the spring. We then were able to use Test D for them at the end of the summer, which gave us a really nice pre- and post-test around the summer program. NWEA does not have that, so we don't have that same metric like that. The federal reporting on the 21st Century Program is almost always a full year in arrears by the time the external evaluator gets done, so there is that. The edgenuity report is on this fall semester, first semester, because we finally had enough students in each of the pools to do a statistical analysis from a psychometrician that could say, yes, you're getting results that are statistically significant. And I forget the other one we put in there. But, so what we tried to do is come up with the most relevant research that indicated the various program elements. The AEMDD report was the other one, which was on arts integration using the model from the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, and that grant ended, which is why that report was the last one.
Okay. It was encouraging to see the RITs go up on the fall-to-winter maps for reading. That was really great. But going back to edgenuity, do you see that there is a trend towards improving the number of activities that kids are completing each week? It looks like the optimal is four to six, but hardly anybody is getting that many. So, is that trend moving up both in students and in the number of activities being completed?
It is, yes. However, it is, we purchased it as a year-round benefit to students, and so, it was brought in by a previous CAO, and we have continued to use that. As teachers have grown more comfortable with the program, we're seeing usage go up. But the Board had acted on reading horizons for K2 as a primary vehicle, and so, the guidance to schools is to maximize reading horizons at the younger grades, and we're seeing more usage across in schools where principals and teachers either, A, have used it in the summer, or are choosing to use it as a center. We will do a full-year analysis. We're anticipating bringing a PDSA with supplemental materials to you in July that would have a full-year report on edgenuity and other online resources, that we should have full-year data for you.
Mr. Rollins, you had your light on. Did you have another question?
Well, I mean, under the results tab, there's just, there's lots of different numbers, and it looks like, you know, some schools are showing. I guess the overall question I've got is, does anybody, so you look at these numbers, they get reported, does anybody then change the program based on what you're seeing in these numbers? Because the high level, I mean, the first one, and this is the one that caught my eye, was on the first page, which showed that, and this is the 2016, 2017 results, and this is kind of what Mr. Siegel was saying, is this is a couple of years old. So, this is actually reporting the 2015, 2016, fall to spring, and showing that in reading, kids who didn't attend the program had a, had a higher RIT gain, RIT score change than kids who did attend the program. And then, in math, it was a little bit higher, but really not much. But then, you know, I can scroll down and see individual schools seem to be reporting some different, better results. So, but you look at that, you know, the high level, and for the elementary school, it doesn't seem like we're getting much bang for our buck, at least that year. So, do we make changes?
We certainly do make changes, and I think we're always looking at the research that's out there, and I think that we probably all could recognize that the number-one determining factor of effect size is implementation, and so, where building staff has worked really hard at implementing programs with fidelity, you get greater results than where there's less strong implementation. We also, in, in the summer program, try and be responsive to multiple data points. So, for example, when we did digital-integrated lessons in Camp to the Future seven years ago, parents and students had an over 90% positive rating of the program. They, the students enjoyed it, the parents said my children learned. The staff said we didn't have enough training. We only had 51% of the staff say they were ready. So, we added a day of training to make sure that teachers felt equipped the next summer. So, we do programs, program revisions like that as well. And also, when you compare students in the 21st Century Program who have gains versus the general population, remember, 21st Century is targeting the neediest students, and so, if they're gaining at or close to their other peers, that's a win, according to the research.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Connor, you had your light on earlier, did you?
I had a question.
Okay, Marty. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, Marty. Okay, any other questions on this item? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call further vote on the approval of 10A, the Extended Day Programming for Summer of 2019.
Mr. Scirravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We are now on to the closed session consent agenda, including the following: the appointment of Cory Shrank as the 12-month principal at Flynn Middle School, the appointment of Jessica Graff as the 12-month program administrator for special education. Might not have pronounced that properly, but the appointment of Brian Doring as a 10-month assistant principal at Maria Montessori Marsh School, and the HR organizational report and addendum, and the following closed session consent student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4262 and 4264 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the entire 2019-20 school year. Student 4263 is expelled for the remainder of this school year through the first semester of the 1920 school year. And the expulsion for student 4265 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year through the entire 2019 school year. And the following students received EIAs. Hold on, this is a long list. Students 1045, 3800, 3816, 3817, 3818, 3819, 3822, 3823, 3827, 3828, 3829, 3030, 3831, 3832, 3833, 3834, 3835, 3836, 3837, 3838, 3839, Student 3840, 3841, 3842, 3843, Student 3844, 3845, 3846, 3847, 3848, 3849, Student 3851, and Student 3852. Is there a motion in a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any recommendations for items on that list to be pulled? Mr. Dixon?
13A, B, and C. You can do them together.
Okay. Any others? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the closed session items not pulled.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Abstain.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirravano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one abstain, one absent.
Okay, so now I need a motion in a second to approve the expulsions for students 4262, 4264, 4263, and the EIA for student 4265.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of those items for the expulsions and the one EIA.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Abstain.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one abstain, one absent.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Scirravano. I'd like to cede my time to our Director of Fine Arts and our Director of Athletics. And let's see the order here. It looks like Mrs. Bonnie Sperling will be up first.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Sperling. I'm the Director of Fine Arts. I'm here to give my update for the year. And we're going to start with, I kind of broke it down into four categories, and that's programming, retention, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. So programming in this district is, is difficult because it's very large, and it's hard to make programs available for all students. But we're making some really good progress. Two years ago, a couple of teachers came to me with an idea for a district-wide marching band, because not all of our high schools can sustain a marching band right now. And so that's been going. We're in our third year now. Last year, we decided to start a district-wide middle school choir, because not all of our middle schools had that programming in their schools. And now this year, we have added a high school district-wide choir. We have a district mariachi band. And in the fall this year, we will have a district-wide elementary choir. So that's pretty exciting. We're trying to move our band down into our fifth grade, but that's tough with scheduling in the elementary levels. But we do have a couple of schools. Froberg started this a couple of years ago, but Haskell has joined in, Montessori, Barber. And then this year, in the fall, Johnson will be moving orchestra into their fifth grade levels, which is pretty exciting. With the INI, with Travis, Travis' help, we were able to do some summer workshops and retreats in theater, mariachi band, and enquires. We're going to continue those this year. We've found great success with those. Kids find some interest in that, and that helps, helps them, helps our recruitment numbers. And then this year, we added a little bit of difference to our all-city festivals, and that we, instead of kids just coming during the day and rehearsing and insectionals, and then they rehearse with their clinicians and all that, we had them attend workshops that were, that were led by local artists, local musicians, theater troops. And then we added this to all of them. They were in art, they were in music, they were in theater. And it just kind of added another programming aspect to the day, as well as community partnerships. See, now that we've got the kids all interested, I wanted to show you what our enrollment looks like. So we're still awaiting enrollment for our 2019 school year, but I think we've made some significant progress in the past couple of years. But now that we have the kids interested, we need to keep them engaged. And you keep them engaged by having teachers who love what they do and are passionate about their subject area. So retention of teachers and placing them in specialty areas is key. So as a lot of you know, I spend a lot of my time recruiting, recruiting, recruiting. When I go to conferences, I attend conferences, but then I'm also in there recruiting. And working with building personnel, building administrators is key. And I want to give an example. Placing teachers in their area of specialty, here's my example. Steve Micalay from Lincoln Middle School, when I got here, he was a .6 teacher, and he was teaching, he was .6, one choir, one band, one orchestra. And he was looking outside the district. I went and talked to him. And I knew he was looking, because I have connections. He says, I'm looking because I want to be a band director. He goes, I didn't go to school to teach orchestra and to teach choir. Even though the state of Illinois and my certification says that I can, I don't want to. I want to be a band director. So I said, grow your band program. If you grow your band program and make it a full-time job, I will find somebody else, and I will work with your principal. And Jim Parker is so easy to work with. He saw the potential in this young teacher. Now banned every year at Lincoln, they attract 100 to 126 graders a year. I mean, that's pretty exciting to see what that's going to do for our high school programs. But having, building administrators that are willing to work with me, let me help them find qualified people to put in there, and then move the schedule around so that we can have 1.0 or 1.2 middle school band director. That's pretty exciting. Partnerships. There's an African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child. And I really, really believe that that's true. And here's my Rockford example. For our all-city festival week, we had over 1,200 students participate. We had 40 volunteers and clinicians, and we were in 14 different venues. And all of them were free. Now, to me, that's go Rockford. I mean, the support for the fine arts is right behind us. And I had to add these extra slides, even though you're not supposed to put a lot of words on slides. But I think it's just important, I just want to recognize all the folks, all the venues that let us use their space at no charge, and all of the clinicians and volunteers that gave up their time. These are folks that get paid to do what they do, and they gave their time to help out our kids. And I think that's pretty exciting. Now, I have a question. My husband said I have to tell a joke. So here's my joke. What does a gastroenterologist, a cardiologist, and a rocket scientist have in common? They are band grandpas. I'll let my husband know that you thought that was a good joke. So currently, we have 13 band grandpas. We're down a couple for this year, but the ones that we have are awesome, and grandmas, and they're serving in 11 different schools. And just so you know, we don't just have grandmas and grandpas, because Swedes brings in interns every year, medical interns, and they have to do volunteering. And there's always about a dozen of them every year that want to volunteer in our schools in the music program. So we have aunts and uncles, and doctors, and grandmas and grandpas. So it's a pretty exciting program. But Pablo Corona did a video, Our City, Our Story, about a year ago. It's on Facebook. And NBC Nightly News, with Lester Holt, heard about our program, asked if they could come and interview the band grandpas. They spent two days between East and Risa and Lincoln interviewing our band grandpas. We're on the NBC Nightly News on March 24th, and as of, right before I got here, I updated it. We have over 531,000 views, so over half, over half a million views. That's pretty exciting. Pretty exciting for our PS205. Because of this program, when I was at All City, one of our clinicians said, you really need to present this at IMEA, which is the Illinois Music Educators Association. She said, put in a proposal. I said, I already did, and they turned me down last year. She goes, put it in again. So I put it in again, and we'll be presenting the band grandpas. And Arnie Rosen is thrilled to go down with me to present at the Illinois Music Association Conference in 2020. Another addition, we started this in 2016, and I'm going to, I'm going to put this on, on Matt Parker, because I've been, I've been flying in his wake for up four and a half years right now. I sat down with him once, and I said, you know, you know, budgets are tight, and I'm trying to make my money, go as far as I can. You know, how do you afford everything that you afford? And he's like, well, I've got this, you know, sports coalition. I'm like, what is that? So he started telling me about it, and I said, well, I want one. So I got one. So I, I worked with Brian Doring, Emily Trop, Catherine Ingleterasaki, Jacob Hardisty, and a parent phenomenal, Carly Shutey. And those are the founding members of the Rockford Fine Arts Coalition. And our mission, we're not going to buy things with the money that we raise, we're going to invest in kids. So while we can buy things for them here, what we want to do is we want to pay for their private lessons, or for their art camps, or the things that, I know Lynn Stockton had a student last year whose parents were undocumented, but she was being offered a position in an art school, prestigious art school in New York. And her parents couldn't fly with her. So the Jefferson community got together and got behind her and helped her raise money to be able to go. That's what the coalition wants to be able to do. We want to be a place for, for kids to be able to go and invest in kids. And lastly, fiscal responsibility. As you probably know, I'm very, very serious about being a good steward of the fine arts budget dollars. But in order to know what we, what we, we need to know what we have before I'm going to spend any money on anything new. So I embarked on this journey through the world of inventory, beginning with a secondary music. So here's some pictures of what happened at King last summer. We collected every secondary instrument from every single school that we have, and it went to King. There were five rooms that were packed with instruments. And that's me in the bottom corner in the red. That's our sonic cleaning machine, because I, every single secondary music teacher spent at least one day, if not more, of their summer, helping me dig through instruments, assess them, figure out what could be fixed, what shouldn't be fixed, what we shouldn't be putting in the hands of kids, because they just don't deserve this. They spent all their time there in the summer and helped me get through this. We're currently working with the theater teachers to do the same thing, to establish an inventory of what we have, what we can share, what needs to be replaced, what we're missing. And we're also this summer going to move into the elementary world and go into all the ORF instruments, the xylophones and all that kind of thing. So after the secondary music inventory was complete, we had about a dozen boxes bigger than this podium of stuff that we didn't want to put in the hands of the kids, or that it was just going to cost more to repair than to replace. So being the queen of recycle-reuse, any instruments that were beyond repair, we repurposed. So my dad made a bunch of these. He's 84 years old, and it gives him purpose. And we sold a bunch of these trumpets and saxophone lamps at the Fine Arts Hall of Fame. It has also kind of led it to conversation about maker's space, which is something Brian Doring and I are working, working on, taking some of our obsolete things and putting them into a space so kids can come in and make lamps and tables and repurpose things. So the old banners that we had for the Fine Arts Week, Mr. Dotson had purchased those for us, but last year, we put the dates on there. Not very smart, because you can't reuse them. So Kate Specht made tote bags out of them, and we sold those also at the Fine Arts banquet. So are you sporting your tote? These two gals here have some. I actually have some with me. There are some still available. If you have any questions for me, we thank you so much for what you do for Fine Arts and all of your support.
Great job. I just want to share a comment that I got today at the Student Ambassador Luncheon. I have a connection with the Haskell School for their STEAM Academy strategic planning thing. So I was sitting there with their principal and their students around this table, and I asked each one of the students what they liked best about STEAM. And one of the students said, I like the band. So I thought that was really cute. Mr. Connor?
Well, number one, you know, really good work. Nerds like me, of course, did look at the numbers, and it was what, almost, I think, almost 20% first year, 15% second year. And so on that kind of trajectory, this is really a wonderful, wonderful success. And I looked at the programming highlights screen, and one thing I'll say is that the mariachi was, I believe, new, new this year. And what an addition. And to see it be so successful, not only district-wide, to be a summer camp, the fact that we have so many arts activities. Needless to say, it's great to see kids really involved over that summertime, where we do tend to lose that engagement. So it's really, I think, I can't say enough good things about what's going on. And really, I'm glad to see the foundation, and will be anxious to hear more about it myself personally. And I'm sure there's a lot of people, and it was very funny, a blast from the past, I knew about a half dozen of the folks that did the workshops. And it's really, for the, for the folks that did the workshops and donated their time, personally, you know, thanks to all of you. A lot of dedication, most of them, it's lifetime's worth of work. And for them to donate it is really special. So a real thank you to the community for their support.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Thank you. I'm just, just like last year, I was blown away, and again this year. So thank you, because it really shows the effort and the work that you're doing. The numbers are up because of that. So thank you.
Mr. Rollins?
On the secondary enrollment, I'm just, I was curious what that consists of. So that's, when you say fine arts, so that's band, choir, orchestra, is it theater, too?
Theater, band, choir, orchestra, art, theater.
So visual arts, too?
Yes.
So, I mean, are there, are there areas where we seem to be getting more students? Are there areas where we seem to be getting less students, fewer students? Or there, what are the challenges? I mean, this is a lot of good news. I'm just curious, do you have any challenges? Do you see any areas where we're seeing challenges?
The challenge is going to be, at the secondary level, at ninth grade, now they're taking their seminar course, I'm not sure what you're calling it now. That's, that's hurting our art, where they used to have a semester where they would have a foundations course, so that they would get those kids that had that extra semester of the year. So that, at least from what they're telling me, has, has hurt some of our enrollment. Our, our music program is, is probably the fastest-growing program. Our choral music program is probably the fastest of the music, but that's the easiest one to do, because everybody can sing. And you don't have to buy any instruments. So they, they come equipped. So that's the fastest-growing.
Okay. And the reason I ask the question is anecdotal. I'd heard what you had just said, that there is this problem of the transition from middle school to high school, with kids finding the time to do that.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes, thank you for your work. I guess my question is, as far as the instruments, do we have enough instruments for every kid that wants to apply or play one?
It was really tight this year, because we grew a lot in our sixth graders. We changed the recruitment, the instrument zoo. We changed it a We changed it a couple of years ago to where, instead of bringing them all to one location, it was at Kresge Hall, now they go to their individual middle school. Well, not quite 100%, but pretty close to, their bus to whatever middle school. So they actually get to meet the teacher that they're going to be with. We also incorporated all of the wheel, the rest of the wheel as well, so they spend 40 minutes or so playing all the shiny instruments, and then they go and they find out other options. Oh, excuse me. So there's less drops that we get. I mean, they pretty much, they sign up right then and there, and they, "Hey, I don't want to be in band, I want to be in art instead." And so kids pretty much stay where they want to stay there, too. So it was tight this year, very, very tight.
Then the other question is, the repurpose of the instruments, on page 16. Do you guys still have that lamp? That's a nice lamp.
It's in my office. That lamp's in my office.
That's a nice one. Okay.
Yep. Everything's for sale.[663.48][663.48](Laughter).
He'll order two. All right. Thank you.
We do a live auction, we can start one right now.
All right. Thank you, Bonnie.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Parker, I believe you're next.
My name is Matt Parker. I'm honored to be in my eighth year serving Rockford Public Schools as the Director of Athletics for 205. We're an all-in family with Rockford Public Schools. My wife teaches at Lincoln. We were able to recruit her away from Harlem a few years ago. I was really enjoying her time there. One of her students is Mr. Scavano's granddaughter.
That's right.
My daughter is going to graduate from Johnson Elementary as a fifth grader and head to Lincoln next year, and my son is a freshman at East and really enjoying his freshman experience. I will say...
Maybe.
Here we go. Oops.
Reload.
There we go. I will say, I can attest to Bonnie's work. My son was in Mr. Michelais' band class at Lincoln Middle School, and it was a phenomenal experience. We learned a lot as a family. He learned a lot as a band student and is now excelling in guitar class at East, which is a lot of fun. And they had a jam session at his 15th birthday last weekend at our house, and one of the people he was jamming with was his grandpa, who is going to be retiring soon and looking for things to do.
Okay.
So I have another band grandpa. All right, some of our highlights, really, our main focus, which is connected to the optimal climate board policy, is to increase, continue to increase, participation numbers. Our goal with the five-year strategic plan was to increase those numbers to 51% of our student athletes between fifth grade and 12th grade participating in some sort of co-curricular activity. We passed that goal at the end of last year, and we believe this year, we're around 54, 55% of the student body between fourth and 12th grade who are participating in at least one co-curricular activity after school. We continue to grow some of our newer initiatives. Boys volleyball is very popular. We're seeing a whole new demographic participating in that sport. Esports is just absolutely blowing up, and the IHSA actually met today to begin talks on adopting that as an official IHSA sport as early as potentially next year. And it's been brought to my attention this year that we were the first school district in Illinois, and one of the first in the Midwest, who actually implemented esports. We have students competing in esports who are going on and receiving full-ride scholarships to major universities. And every week, we see new facilities that are being built at major, high-major colleges and universities across the country. So it's just another opportunity for a whole different segment of student athletes to participate in gaming. Robotics continues to grow with our elementary, middle school, and high school offerings, and many of our student athletes are competing at a high level, creating just incredible robots when they get to their high school programs. We continue to implement our continuous improvement, which is called the Player Scorecard. This is something Dr. Vosberg and I worked on, started implementing about five years ago. It's heavily based on the book, The Four Disciplines of Execution, and we have 18 metrics that we expect our athletic directors, both in the middle schools and the high schools, to be implementing, which we call our leading indicators, with the idea that if those things are implemented, that the lagging indicator, increased participation, will continue to grow. And again, the importance of participation, as we know from internal data, that our students who are involved in co-curriculars have higher grade point averages, they're taking more AP classes, their attendance is higher, and their behavior is better throughout the school day. We continue to expand our community partnerships, not only nationally but internationally. One of the groups that I've had the honor to be a part of is a district athletic director group that we meet and conference call every six weeks, and that's expanded to include the district athletic director of Ontario, Canada, which is a nice connection for us with Fred Van Vliet living there and competing there. And it's just nice to talk to men and women in my position throughout the country and now across borders. It's kind of like a free professional development every six weeks. And through that group, one of the things that's become very clear, that I talk to Dr. Vosberg a lot, is that we are really leading and cutting edge on a lot of the initiatives that we've implemented, whether it's facilities, program development, new programs like esports and robotics, which is really refreshing to hear at the national and international level. Dr. Vosberg presented this before, so I'm just going to skip over this. We've had to expand our first in 20 years and our first in 10 years to four slides now, from two slides last year. And you can just see the amazing work that our coaches and student athletes and athletic directors are accomplishing across the district in all our buildings. I won't go through all of these, you guys have this information, but it's very exciting. And most recently, my family and I were able to spend the weekend in Peoria, not only watching East boys basketball compete downstate, but also watch that exciting match that was alluded to earlier, the Scholastic Bowl Championship, which my wife and I, between the two of us of the 80-something questions, knew four answers.
All right.[1108.58][1108.58](Laughter).
So we're very proud of our students.
Okay.
So again, two full pages of first in 10 years. Again, going back to the continuous improvement, this is what our scorecards look like. I included a couple. One of the things I really like about these is that it not only compares, you know, what the school is doing to the metrics that we're following, but it also compares them to the rest of the schools in the school district, which has led to a lot of great conversations and competition, and really pushed one another to excel in some of the initiatives that we've been working on. And lastly, we had several revenue-generating events, most of which are annual, as well as organizations. I just wanted to share a few. The Tip-Off Classic, which we had teams from five different states coming to Rockford and spending the Thanksgiving week with us, was sponsored by our alum Fred Van Vliet, and had a very positive impact financially for the school district for that week. We hosted IHSA Sectionals, which you probably read about at Rock Valley. We have a great partnership with them. We cut a big check to the IHSA from hosting those. We did sell out Friday night when East played for the sectional championship, but we did get to keep some of that money, again, going back into our programs and for our student athletes. The Rumble in the Rock is our showcase at Rock Valley College, that Rock Valley continues to partner with us, and we just met about this last week. And we're going to be adding some more exciting, family-friendly, and community events during that day. The Rockford Sports Coalition continues to grow and continues to donate, between the annual donation of $20,000 to our four high schools, an additional $45,000 to $50,000 through our fundraising initiatives throughout the year. And lastly, something that I'm really excited about, and I think is huge for our community, we were just officially approved this last week to host two NCAA-approved showcases here in Rockford, where college coaches can come, watch the best talent in the Midwest, come to Rockford. We were approved to host eight states. Those weekend tournaments will be in our facilities, and some of the coaches that you saw as recent as last night, coaching in the national championship game, will be here in Rockford, not only recruiting our kids, but recruiting kids from the Midwest. So an exciting event, which is not only huge for the school district, but also huge for our community when it comes to bringing revenue and building the tax base in our community. I understand what you guys do, and I appreciate all the work that you guys put into your positions. And as a community member and a taxpayer on two houses here in town, I do appreciate your service, and we know that you don't do it for the money, you do it because you care about the community. So thank you, and I'll entertain any questions.
Mr. Connor.
I'm going to repeat myself and say, what a great job. I looked at the athletics highlights, and it's really interesting that not only are we increasing in numbers, but there's a real creativity in the extracurriculars, which is great to see. And I have to say, seeing the robotics in there, and even the esports, is really exciting, because those are things that are real out there. I talked to a group, I think, last week, and one of the things I said is that you can't imagine the kinds of jobs that are out there. It's mind-blowing, the kinds of skill sets, so it's great to see us encourage that. And it's great to see that we've really invested highly in our students and their accomplishments, the fact that we tie it back to academic achievement, the fact that, again, it's year-round participation. So there's really so many good, really good things happening. Love the fact that we have continuous improvement. I have to say, as, again, part of the nerd patrol here, that is really good to see, that we've really put that, a part of it. And yes, I'm going to say, for the 100th time, I just can't wait for two weeks when the East boys basketball team will be here, but, you know, really a lot to celebrate. And I think it's great that we are leveraging our relationship with Fred Van Vliet, who's a fabulous pro and a great guy, and really has given back to the community. So thank you to all of you for doing a great job, at the coaches, the parents. Now, all the schools are really contributing, I think, both to the fine arts and to the extracurriculars, so it's really great to see. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Connor. Mr. Segal.
As a parent of a student athlete, I get to see the things that you have talked about occur very, very up close. Better attendance, better attention towards grades.[1466.26][1466.26](Coughs). I don't know, my son is already pretty good, pretty good in the classroom as far as climate issues goes, but I definitely know that that is a reality for a lot of the student athletes. One of the things that you didn't mention, but I think, and it was easy to overlook, is when kids do participate in the extracurricular activities, they do usually get another set of adults with whom to engage in something that is of a very high-level interest to the students. And where these coaches and assistants and just other parents are that engaged, I think it makes a huge impact on the understanding of these students of how to, you know, navigate through the real world. I've been very happy in the three years that I've been on the board to see extracurricular activity increase, and like Mr. Connor said, in some of these really creative ways. So I think that this is all a huge bonus to the school district, and thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Anything else? Mr. Rollins.
Just a quick question on the school. On the scorecards, what is the high school completion rate and the middle school completion rate reporting? What are those bar graphs?
So the bar graphs are specific tasks that we're asking them to complete, and I can get you a checklist for that, but it's things that aren't rocket science, but for example, that you attend registration as an athletic director, you have information about the programs that are coming up in the fall, and not only the fall, but the winter. And beyond that, encourage coaches and even student athletes who've participated in the past to be there at registration, to greet families, talk to them about sports. Another example, quick example I'll give you is, we expect as part of this that our head coaches and athletic directors are engaged in their feeder programs, not just the middle school students that are coming to their high schools, but also even down into the elementary schools. A great example of this is Guilford High School girls' basketball. They have their team, their coaches in place, Eisenhower, the success there has been tremendous. I think they won two of the three girls' city championships. And not only that, but they have their coaches down in Brookview and Spring Creek coaching, using the same terminology, using some of the plays in the playbook. So when they get to Guilford High School as freshmen, they are well-prepared for what Coach Hules wants to do with them at the high school level. So just simple tasks that we expect them to accomplish, but again, isn't difficult stuff, but it takes commitment and effort.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Jerk? Okay. All right, we'll move on then to our action items for tonight. Our first one is the resolution to adopt the 2018-19 amended budget that was presented by Michelle, and Michelle, so is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or comments? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the amended budget for 2018-19 school year.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our second action item tonight is the Academy for Urban School Leadership Program that Dr. Vosberg presented on behalf for Conklin Elementary School. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or discussion? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Academy for Urban School Leadership for Conklin.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
The next two items I want to like to do together, if everybody's okay with that, they are board policy revisions for Board Policy 2.20 on the powers and duties of the Board of Education, and 2.80, which are the board member oath and our conduct. Everybody okay with that? All right, I'll take a motion then to approve those.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, and seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the revisions for Board Policy 2.20 and 2.80.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is the approval of the Acme IT Security Platform that was presented to us last board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved, and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the IT security platform.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
And our last action item for tonight is the U.S. History Resource Adoption that was presented by... was presented by Carrie and Cory last time. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or comments? You have your light on. No, okay, all right. Here, would you like my, here.
I'm first in. I know, I'm ready to do that.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the U.S. History Resource Adoption.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, we will now move on to new business, and our first item will be presented by Mr. Phillips on additional projects for fiscal year '20, the wish list, right? All right.
Good evening. At the beginning of the academic year, schools from across the district submitted projects for funding consideration. The list of requests were reviewed, and the projects were placed into four categories: health, safety, programmatic life cycle, and FY20, or projects that did not meet FY20 district priorities. In August of 2012, the board approved and adopted the facility's master plan and deferred maintenance plan. The projects submitted during the fiscal year '20 budget planning process were not identified during the planning of the facilities and deferred maintenance plan. The administration recommends that the facility's master plan and deferred maintenance plan be updated to include the following projects. The projects that were under the health, safety category were given top priority, and there were two projects that fell under programmatic that were also brought forward for consideration. Under the health, safety listing, replacing the seventh-floor roof of the administration building. Also in the administration building, replacing the atrium with a clear-story structure that includes a roof and windows that will still allow natural light into our atrium area. Repairing parking lot and sidewalks at Lincoln Middle School. An exterior lighting upgrade and reconstructing the east entrance, or the entrance in the east parking lot at Auburn. Replacing stage curtains and rigging repairs at Lincoln and Washington, as well as rigging repairs at East, Jefferson, and Guilford. Security entrances at Auburn, Marshall Middle School, and Haskell. Replacing sections of sidewalk and parking lot at Fairview. Parking lot repair and drainage issues at Marshall Elementary School. And then removing five tennis courts at Guilford. Under the programmatic category, it would be, at Byer, it would be building walls to create eight classrooms and some office space in the library to prepare for the early childhood development movement from Dennis to Byer. And lastly, creating an accessible playground area, which would include chain-link fence at Wilson Aspire. The total project request is $2.8 million. The FY20 budget includes $1.8 million. We are asking to use $1,532,97 from our fund balance to support the $2.8 million project recommendation. I'll take any questions.
Mrs. McCullough.
I'm going to start with the seventh-floor roof. What did we do last year?
Last year, there was $353,000 allocated. I believe it was for the atrium. Unfortunately, it's going to, the demolition alone of the current atrium windows would be $350,000. So, we would basically be including that 350 into the project total of building this clear-story structure.
So, we approved $350,000 to do these, I thought it was for the seventh-floor roof. It was for the atrium leak. So, we already approved that, and now you're asking for an additional $1,194,000? Or does that include it?
No, that is the addition, that's additional. After, so the 350 plus the additional 1.1 that we're asking for here. After further review with architects and engineers, the current atrium structure is not, we're told, is not a long-term fix. They had recommended this clear-story structure, which basically is a roof, a structure, a vertical structure with a roof and windows to create the natural light into our atrium, but it's a longer-term solution than what we currently have.
Wow.
Sure, Mrs. Holdley.
So, one of the issues is that they no longer design the windows in a similar fashion as what we have in this building, where they're sloped inwards. And so, that's one of the hugest issues. The other cost involved, and by doing the roof and the atrium together, we're actually saving some monies because we have to bring in a crane to do the roof and the atrium windows.
So, yeah, it's a lot of money. That's my first wow, my second wow is the fact that we approved some money that didn't get spent and is just going to be added into this, and that just wasn't part of the presentation to kind of update us on the total cost of the project, that's all. My second one would be, and I don't know that all the board members were copied on it, so I'm going to ask you to refer to the note that you did send to Coach David about the tennis courts, and maybe have a little bit of conversation about what is our responsibility, what was the park district's responsibility, how much of the park, of their responsibility they, you know, that was upheld, so that we have a full picture of it.
So, if you're familiar with the tennis center out there, it's shaped in kind of an L shape. As part of the IGA that was approved by the board in 2015, the school district was responsible for resurfacing six of the tennis courts. As part of the agreement, the district had the opportunity to choose which courts they were going to renovate. And those happened to be what I would call the first six running north and south in that bank of tennis, nine tennis courts. Also stated in the agreement was the intent of both parties was to reduce the number of courts that were at 14 to eight courts. We ended up renovating nine of the courts. The park district's responsibility as part of the agreement, they could renovate, repair, and/or remove the remaining eight of the 14 courts. My understanding is they decided to renovate the additional three farthest north courts to create this nine-court plain surface. One of the reasons, the five courts that run east and west was left out of this renovation, my understanding is we have some severe drainage issues underneath the subsurface, which is creating uneven plain surface and cracking and things of that nature. So, basically, those five courts were left, nothing was done to them, and they've been in this condition since, well, 2017 is when we did the other, the other nine courts. The total cost to repair the nine courts was $618,000. Looking at the scope of work and the cost, I'm estimating just to resurface these five courts would be $365,000. That doesn't include any work we would have to do to improve the drainage and the subsurface, which there'd be additional costs involved with that. At this, I didn't have an estimate on that.
I'm, okay, maybe you guys got this, but I didn't, so I'm going to go through this again. We had, there's 14 courts there?
Correct.
We were going to do eight. Did the IGA state that we, as a district? I thought we were each doing six.
I'm sorry. Our portion of the agreement was we would renovate six of the 14.
So, we did eight.
We did, nine total was done. The park district had, as part of their agreement, could renovate, replace, or totally remove eight of the courts. My understanding is they decided to do...
Let me provide some context. These numbers aren't random. All of our other high school facilities have six tennis courts. The park district and the district, many years ago, partnered on the Guilford Tennis Center to be a community tennis center that the park district paid a great deal of the operating cost for. As belt tightening has occurred, the park district did not want to continue to support a tennis center of this size. Guilford High School still needs to have at least six tennis courts. We see no reason to get rid of the three that have just recently been resurfaced, so that's how we landed on the nine. And so, there are now five additional courts that at great expense could be added, but, and while it certainly would be an asset to the tennis community, and certainly would get used by Guilford and Eisenhower, as our speaker said today, the concern is the exorbitant cost, both for the under, the work that would need to be done under the courts, as well as the work that would be needed, done to resurface the courts. And so, that is, and the park district has no interest at this time in paying the cost or splitting the cost to do that. So, it would be 100% the district or some kind of a public partner, public-private partnership. I have asked that we set a meeting to at least listen to the tennis community, to hear what they have to say, and see if there are some creative ideas about fundraising. I think these are some great community advocates, and I would love to at least hear their perspective on how we can work together. But there's a very logical reason why six courts is equity with the other schools in the district. Don't want to get rid of an asset of three that are already part of that, and there's some lighting and some other things. But now that it is no longer a park district, school district partnership for those additional five courts, that would be, that would be taking dollars away from other facility investments. So, that was why the decision was made.
My question is really more of our agreement with the park district, and did they uphold their part? And what I heard you say is they redid three of them, and if they had committed to six...
They did not.
Were the other three supposed to be torn down by them, or they're solely at our cost?
Under the agreement, you may recall, there's a cost-shifting provision where we were keeping ledgers as to when we would use park district items, and they would use ours. And then we would have to pay monies, either party would if it exceeded a certain sum. Well, we have overused on our part, so under the ledger that has been kept, we would have to write a check basically to the park district, or we could offset it by actually tearing down these courts, which the park district would be obligated under the IGA to do, and then we could write them a check.
I didn't, boy, I didn't realize this was part of the, that whole facility use piece back and forth. I thought we had reconciled all that. So, we don't really have an understanding that they were doing six and we were doing six, because that's not...
No, we did. That's under the agreement. It does, we could hold their feet to the fire and have them remove the courts.
I think we're confusing two issues. The Auburn Tennis Center was also done as part of this partnership.
Correct.
So, we're confusing two issues.
You think so?
And this is about, and this is about the demolition, and I think we'd be happy to bring this, bring some additional detail back on this, because I don't think we should take action on this $40,000 anyways until we've talked to the tennis community. So, I would suggest, we also are going to, at a further date, bring back a reconciliation of the, of the park district IGA, and are likely to move away from that agreement moving forward, where it's just a pay-as-we-go agreement. So, I think it would be premature to finish this discussion tonight. I think we need, the board needs a whole bunch of other information outside of that, and we're, and I don't think we want to take action even as early as the next board meeting on this topic anyways.
I agree. It's just really trying to understand, that's all. And so, if you provide that context, that'd be great. But moving forward, will this then no longer be a, it will not be, this tennis center will purely belong to the school district and will be responsible for everything going forward with these courts and with the lighting and with the upkeep and everything? Or is the park district still participating?
We're still hammering out some details on that, on the new IGA with the park district.
So, that would be something that's important for us to know as well, if we want to spend more money on, okay.
And the park district is also analyzing its current operations to determine whether or not to continue what the tennis center has is.
Thank you.
Mr. Rollins?
So, my recollection was that we just redid the auditoriums, particularly at the high schools and at least some of the middle schools, and I thought we even had architects involved doing that. Did we redo the auditoriums at East and Guilford and Jefferson?
I don't recall if we redid those auditoriums. I know we had work done, but, yes, the sound systems and things like that, and seating at different auditoriums at the high school levels. But I know the rigging is what was not done, and that's been identified by, through the life-safety tours.
Well, I guess that's just, that feeds into my larger comment, and which is really just a comment for, I know we're going to be thinking about doing another 10-year facilities plan. I, you know, I see some of these, and I think, why wasn't this included in the last facilities plan? You know, parking lot and handicapped entrance are crumbling and falling apart. We didn't include that in the last 10-year facilities plan? Parking lot repair addressed drainage issues. Section of sidewalk and parking lot with large holes. I hope that, you know, no plan's perfect, but I hope that, I'm just asking, that we do a better job when we do the next 10-year facilities plan of looking at our actual needs and making sure that we don't get hit with these surprises, that things like this actually get included in the plan. Because from my standpoint, this is kind of a surprise.
Yes, and, Mr. Rollins, you actually bring up an excellent point. That's why we have asked the board to start considering the functional condition assessment, because that's much more comprehensive than what we have the capability of doing and much more accurate. And so, that gives you a lot more data than what you had under the last plan, in which to make some reasoned decisions and informed decisions.
And I would just also add that these are examples of life-cycle items that may have not been addressed when they needed to be addressed. And our climate, if we have cracks in our sidewalks or parking lots that allow water to get underneath them that cause further problems. So, it just further reflects the importance of identifying our life-cycle costs going forward, and also understanding if we don't fund some of these things in an operating budget or in plans, these are the type of things that happen.
Mr. Dixon?
So, just for clarification, you're saying the comprehensive plan that we have, we need to, we need to outsource? Would that, what, your accent, or your...
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
What you're saying?
What Mr. Phillips has presented in the past on a couple of different occasions, or at least one in depth in the answered questions before, is what's called functional...
Facility, facilities' condition.
Facilities' condition assessment. And so, what that would do is, and I'll let Mr. Phillips explain again.
It's really taking an inventory at a, at a school building level, assessing our building envelope. We've addressed a number of our windows throughout, through the current facilities master plan, but it'll take a look at our roofs. It's going to take a look at our HVAC, HVAC systems, which we have touched some, but not all. We probably made a larger impact on replacement of boilers during this current facilities master plan. It's also going to look at our, a number of our infrastructure items, plumbing, as we talked about, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, domestic water, those type of things, and really putting an age and a life-cycle replacement to these items. So, we have a much more in-depth inventory per building of what we have out there and identified cost with that.
So, is there a plan for that?
We did include that, so it was part of the executive summary... We did include that. So as part of the executive summary, I included the full list of projects that were submitted. One of those projects was to fund a facilities condition assessment.
Where does that stand now?
At this time, it's not being recommended for funding, or is not on the, on the funding.
Right. It's something that we think the board should consider as we look, we were coming up on the possibility of a new five-year facility, or a five-year strategic plan in the fall. And we're also, and we are still in year eight of a 10-year facilities plan. So we want to make sure we strike the right time. So it'll be up to the board to ultimately decide in which fiscal year you want to fund this. But our recommendation is going to be that this is something that, the earliest we would recommend it is probably next year. But you could also make the case to wait one more year to do that as well, depending on the leisure of the board. We've heard very clearly the board's top priority has been focusing on student achievement and getting involved in a very detailed facilities planning process. It's certainly something that we can overlap with the end of the current 10-year plan, but it will take considerable time, resources, and community engagement to go through that process. This part of the plan is the technical backbone of that, which takes the 20-year lifecycle proposals that we have in place right now, that basically say, hey, roof should last 20 years, and it's year six, so it should have 14 years left. What Mr. Phillips is proposing is something that really actually analyzes the condition of the roof, and maybe it's, it's supposed to have 14 years left, but it actually has 18 years left, or it's supposed to have 14 years left, but it may only have 10. So that's why you need this increased level of analysis before you undertake a new facilities plan. But I think we need further discussion as a board to determine if you, the timing of when you want to undertake the, not only this $500,000 investment that is estimated, but also, it was two years of very intensive community work to go through the facilities process last time. And I'd love to get a little more feedback from the board to determine whether you want to undertake that as early as next year, or if your horizon is delayed a little bit, because we technically still have three more years of investment to make in this current facilities plan before it's done.
All right. And I guess my last question would be going back to Jude's question. So what would be the cost to fix those other six underneath if Guilford, can we find out the cost, and give us a full report of everything, just for us, just for information, for us to know?
Yes, I can, I can look into that.
Mr. Connor?
Yep. In terms of this list, and are you looking tonight to lay the groundwork for this to be approved? Is there a time schedule? And I'm going to leave the tennis courts off for right now. But in terms of this list, is the next step, you're going to be asking for approval of this entire list based on that differential from the one fund making up the difference? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the timing of this is that in two weeks, this will come for a final vote, right?
Correct.
Is that?
That is what we're aiming for. We are going to prioritize our schedules to get the meeting with the tennis group together. And we might take off the tennis courts. The one thing I want to point out that I think got missed in a lot of the communication here, is the fact that we do have other tennis courts that are going to be needing repairs in the near future, probably by next year. And so Mr. Phillips did indicate that it was going to be around at least 360-some thousand to do just the resurfacing, not including the drainage issues out at Guilford. So he can get you the exact numbers. Yes.
I think my point would be that, so let me be clear on what I'm asking for. Minus the tennis line item, and I do like line item numbers, right, makes it much easier, is, are we asking so that in two weeks, because frankly, the tennis court thing sounds like it's going to take longer, I got a couple of questions there, but everything else is on the table, and in two weeks, you expect that. So that might be something we might want to consider. And I assume, and this, I think, goes, a question to fellow board members as well, is that it seems like if we've got individual questions, that we would want to get answers over the next two weeks on some of these. Because I know there was some question on the atrium windows and some details like that. So I think, you know, what I'd recommend, as I'm listening to the conversation, is there's probably a number of details if you want this done in two weeks. So that would be thing one. Thing two, though, is, one of my responses to the tennis court is, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but this is, to me, it seems like there are, if not academic, at least community conversations. And so I'm wondering, you know, has athletics been a part of this conversation to date, or has this just been a facilities conversation?
Yes, Mr. Parker has been part of the conversation every step of the way.
Okay. Because I think that would be the one thing, then, to have a plan in the facts. So I am assuming that athletics, from an educational programming standpoint, is okay with the five courts not being a part of the future plans? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So then it seems like, yeah, the local tennis community is part of the conversation. And if I, according to Mrs. Hoadley, there are other tennis courts that might be on this list. And then my other question would be, does that change our calculus at all because of what the other facilities are? I mean, will that influence what we do here?
It will, to the extent that we get into some equity issues if we repair these and then don't have the funds to do.
To repair the others. Okay. So I'm just, so on this particular line item, are you anticipating that over the next couple of weeks, you think you can have sessions with the local tennis community and see if there are ideas that, so that's one of the line items, and that over the next two weeks before that, so there are some other questions? And we, as the board, should articulate what questions we have, but specifically for the tennis, that you're committing to meet with them, and making sure that we have an overall picture of the tennis and the equity issues.
Yeah. And we might just remove this and get the other ones approved, because we really want to get the roof leaks fixed.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't trying to tie it up. I was asking more for clarity on how much time and the rest. Okay.
Mr. Rollins, do you have another question?
Yeah, just from a historical perspective, I mean, my recollection is that this wasn't a surprise, and this was what was discussed back in 2015, right? So, I don't know. I mean, if we want to give them time to come up with some plan to raise money, I guess we can give them some time to come up with some plan to raise money. But this, I mean, we're four years into this now. And, you know, and it wasn't supposed to be our responsibility anyway. If those extra courts were going to be done, they were going to be the Park District. And so, you know, I do wonder why suddenly it becomes our issue again. And I don't want it to be our issue. It's not our issue. It's the Park District's issue. So if, you know, if the tennis community wants something done, really, they should be talking to the Park District.
I have a funding question. Maybe this is for Michelle. The rent money from the bank goes into a fund for, for what capital projects like the roof, or not, or?
Yeah. So this building does have its own fund balance. So Fund 24, when you look at our budget summary, is our administration building. So yes, the rental income that we do get from the bank goes into that fund balance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, I was right about that. Okay.
We'll finish your question, then. How much of that fund balance is going to go toward the atrium and the roof?
Well, again, if we look at the total list, we do need additional, about additional million dollars to fund all of these projects. So I don't know currently their Fund 24's fund balance, but I do know that there is fund balance available. And we also have, again, with our 18 projected budget, about 1.8 million to fund the rest of this, so.
Ms. Hoadley?
As I recall, there's approximately, between 400 and 500,000 in the Fund 24 account. So it's not enough to cover the requested projects. May I also respond when you said this is the Park District's issue about the tennis courts? It is under the IGA. They are in disrepair, and as people, we have not put up the nets on them, but we also want to ensure that we don't have any liability issues with folks using it, which would become our issue, since they're on our property.
My point was that it's a Park District issue to decide if they want to have courts there.
Right, yes.
It appears that the Court District has decided they don't want to have courts there, in which case, you know, we should be taking them out for the reasons that you've articulated.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Dixon, do you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify kind of what Connor said. Is the green, all the green is what we want to vote on, except for the tennis courts?
One possibly.
For the next, for the next, okay, that's all.
Okay. Any others?
It's not stuck. I turned it on.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
As you were.
It's always a mystery.
There was mention made of whether or not we might want to move up the conversation about the facilities plan. I just heard that, right? And so when will that be put on our agenda to have that conversation? And I ask that question because with a whole new group of people in charge of facilities and operations, I think that we're having a different set of eyes. We have, I, you know, 10 years is a long time to look out on something, especially information changes with, with new people looking at things with a fresh set of eyes. And so I would like to know what the plan is for the board to have that conversation, because I think it is important that we do.
So we can bring it forward right away. My recommendation is that we wait until after the superintendent evaluation on, around November 1st, and we have, and the board has decisions to make about a five-year facility. I'm thinking it may be more likely to be a five-year facilities plan this time, but it may be a 10. But I think if you look at the bond structure, a five-year is going to be more logical. And I think it's also important that the board can enter conversations about a five-year strategic plan. And so I think these things are all in context, and I think it's important that the board take all of that into consideration in terms of what that order of operation should be. So I think, but I would be, we'd be happy to bring it forward as a separate item and let you discuss it. Or it could be a committee of the whole topic, and we could have a greater, more of a conversation about it.
Actually, one of my thoughts was, there are new eyes, but they're new. And so there's probably still information that you're gathering. And then we've heard that about the life cycles and specific life, not just this roof is 20, should get 20 years, but this roof only is going to get 16. And you said you were going to follow through and do some of that information. So before, we can actually come up with a plan, but at least we can set in motion what our process is going to be for that plan. That's all. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. So in some form, this will come back to the board on April 23rd for a vote. All right. Mr. Dotson, School Messenger.
Hello again. Tough presentation to follow. I am here to present the School Messenger, RPS 205 custom mobile app, along with Mr. Jason Barthel. The, oh, here we go. The problem we are trying to solve is to, you know, how do we figure out to better communicate with our parents? Right now, we have lots of ways that we communicate with our parents. Oftentimes, they are not consolidated, and sometimes they're not easy to find. And as you can see with the illustration here, whether that's communication from a school to parents, whether that's with social media, whether that's with the Home Access Center, there are many ways that we do this. And so we think a smarter approach would be to take advantage of the approximately 95% of Americans who have some cell phone of some type, and the almost 80% who have an actual smartphone. If you look at the background, you know, we've always kind of, kind of our guiding principle, if you will, we've always kind of said that schools have the more impactful, you know, the relationship with our parents, because that's who they communicate with the most frequently. However, you know, our department, we lead a lot of those communication initiatives, and we facilitate that. And what we think, we can do a much better job and improve and assist schools with communicating with our parents using much more modern technology. I just wanted to show you the survey. This is done by a group called Trends in Community Engagement, and they take about a half a million parents and aggregate the data about what's the most important characteristics for effective communication with parents. And what they found was parents want information that is convenient. They want information that's pushed to them, that they don't have to necessarily look for. They want personalization. They want information that is timely. They want us to realize that they're busy. And they want information that is high-impact and relevant. We think the solution is to build our own RPS 205 custom mobile app, where we can streamline the information that parents get, that parents will have more choices and options about what information they want to receive, information that is more convenient, and more options that they can choose from. Mr. Jason Barthel and his team kind of led this part of the process in terms of deciding what to choose. So we looked at doing nothing. We looked at a company called Intouch, K12, and Blackboard, and we decided to go with School Messenger. We found that to be the most cost-effective approach, and they easily, more easily integrate into our current and existing systems. The total cost, the additional cost for this app, is a little over $11,000. I believe it was Mr. Dixon who asked the question at the last budget presentation, when the Information and Technologies team presented their budget about, who is this Wes Messenger? I think we currently pay approximately $38,000 annually for them to supply our automated phone system. They do the mandated phone calls home when a student doesn't show up. And I believe our Transportation Department also uses the system. Assessing this situation, obviously, this is something we're excited about. We've been after this for quite some time now. So we think that we would love to begin the planning and potentially roll this out for our next school year. We like the fact that their administration tool allows us to look at metrics on who's downloading the app, who would be using it. And we certainly want to partner with Dr. Monson's team to add this question to our parent climate survey, to see if parents think this works or that this is effective. On the return on investment, truly believe that, you know, if we can get parents more engaged, more highly engaged parents, certainly leads to more highly engaged students. Streamline communication, more effective communication, we think is helpful, and certainly we think this meets the needs of our customers. With regards to reporting back, we think sometime in the third quarter of next year, around January 2020, we think we'll have enough baseline information to kind of look at and see who's actually downloaded the app, and who's actually using the app. The last thing before I take any questions, I do have a really quick video. It's about two minutes. And I'm really, normally not a fan of promotional videos, but it's quick. And I think they do a decent job of just kind of explaining some of the additional benefits for our parents. So, Mr. Producer, if you will?
Have you considered building an official mobile app for your district? Join hundreds of districts that are claiming their place in the app stores with an officially branded custom mobile app. With a single tap, your app delivers key district and school content to parents, students, staff, and the community on the go. Let the School Messenger mobile apps team do all of the work to design, build, publish, and maintain your official app in Apple's App Store and mobile play for Android. It's your district app. It's branded with your look and feel. It's completely custom. Let's take a closer look. Parents are presented with the information they value most. The logicals, color, icons, layout, and more are completely customized for you. District news is now just a tap away. The feed updates automatically as you publish new information to your website, social media sites, and even your School Messenger notification service. What about events? Your app supports an unlimited number of calendars which update automatically, and parents can even add the event to their personal calendars. It takes just a few taps to keep parents connected to what is happening at school. A real time saver for parents and staff is having easy access to contact information. Here is an example of a district directory. It's easy to find the person we are looking for and quickly connect with them, all within an intuitive interface that parents are immediately familiar with. And what about other services parents like to use, such as School Messenger Content Manager? And what about other services parents like to use such as School Messenger Content Manager? It's easy to integrate third-party sources. For example, with the optional contact manager, parents can quickly update contact preferences and review past messages. The app is totally yours. Parents can follow just the schools they are interested in and they'll stay connected regardless of which language they prefer. Your app automatically translates content into more than 80 languages. With a custom mobile app from School Messenger, you'll quickly be connecting with parents in a whole new way. And when districts go mobile, it makes a positive impact on the broader community. Local news loves to tell the story. When you partner with School Messenger, you join hundreds of districts that have taken the step to go mobile and you'll work with a proven award-winning partner. Learn more at schoolmessenger.com and take your district mobile today.
And before I answer any questions, I do want to apologize for those of you who noticed the Green Bay Packer logo on one of those examples. So please pardon me for that example.
Any questions for Earl? Mr. Dixon?
That's that one. Now, the app will be free to the parents, right?
Absolutely free, 100% free.
And then, yeah, that's it.
Mr. Connor?
So I'm very much in favor of this. If you know the age groups of a lot of the parents now, having an app would make a lot of difference. So I'm really in favor of this. I think one of my questions is technical. You don't have to answer it tonight.
Mr. Barthel is here for technical.
Yeah, that's right. I believe we're HTML5 on our current website, so we would be able to reuse essentially the look and feel and the behaviors that we've got on the current website? Or is this totally separate?
So the app is, is a separate in itself, but we can use the same colors, look and feel in the app if we choose to do so.
But would we have to develop, is my question, or would we be able to reuse it with HTML5? You can essentially reuse the widgets and all the rest.
That's correct.
Okay, so we could reuse some of that work because I wouldn't want the app to look and feel different than that. That'd be the only follow-up that I'd ask you to make sure that, that's tested if, if this is approved. So I mean, it will be, that would be just a detail. I'd want to make sure, because a lot of apps, once they're put out, are fundamentally different than the website and, and that it's not just more work. It really could confuse the parents.
Understood.
Any other comments or questions? All right, great job. This will be, come back to us for a vote on April 23rd then at our board meeting, two weeks. And we save the best for last. Jen Maisak and Mrs. Overton will be presenting the Read 180 Universal.
Good evening. I'm Jen Maisak, Director of Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and I'm presenting along with Deb Overton, the Dean of Differentiation. I'm here to present the PDSA for the Continued Use of Read 180. Earlier this year, we found out that Read 180 would no longer, their current platform would no longer be supported by the publisher. Continued use of the Read 180 program will require an upgrade. Without the upgrade, students would not have consistent access to the program that we know works for them. Read 180 was introduced to our district in 2011. It has been used for the leveled reading programs in our middle school and as a reading intervention in our high schools. When we get the student profile right, we are seeing success for our students. 85% of our students are achieving at least one years of growth with 30% of them achieving more than two years' growth in one year in the program. Alternative choices, we really looked at eliminating Read 180. We looked at not upgrading to the new platform. However, our IT department determined that we would not be able to provide consistent access for our students if we didn't upgrade. We also looked at forming a curriculum leadership team in order to build a new curriculum, but we neither have the time for that, to have that ready for the, this fall, nor do we have a determined cost on what that would be. And we don't want to replace a system that we know is working for our students. The solution is to continue offering Read 180 and in to do so effectively, we need to upgrade that to the new platform. We'd also like to promote the use of the problem-solving process to properly identify students for the Read 180 program, especially in the middle schools since we'll be moving to an ELA block and the reading class will become a true intervention class. The total cost for this upgrade is 321,000. That also includes a little over 16,000 to integrate the System 44 reading program into that platform too, so we have one database that we're using. We will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the Read 180 program by looking at the data provided by the company, which includes the Lexile growth, projected, projected growth, fluency and comprehension, and we'll also be looking at the reading portions of our map assessments. As we've already discussed, the 85% of our students are showing growth in this program. We know that when we get the student profile right, that that growth rate will be even We will be reporting to Instructional Council semi-annually, using both that Read 180 data and the MAP reading growth data. Any questions?
Okay, Mrs. McCollough.
So talk about the profile issue. We're, are we not identifying enough? Are we identifying too many? Are we identifying the wrong people? Because there seems to be.
Yeah, that's a really great question and honestly, that's what the MTSS process is trying to do, is get better at identifying which students fit which programs the best. And part of that is making sure that we're not using things like cut scores to identify whether or not a student is taking a class, but to look at the whole child and really see what the best fit is for a kid. So we're looking at more than one data point. We're making sure that we're looking at both their MAP growth, their formative assessments, their grades in their classes, how their attendance fits into the equation. So it's really trying to look at a holistic part of a student so that we can.
So is that, but do you think it's been underutilized? Is that?
Well, in, for the middle schools, because we have had the leveled classes, all students have been placed in those classes based on more like cut scores. So like if this is what you scored, then this is the class you go into. And sometimes we know kids aren't great at assessments, so we want to make sure we're taking a broader look at what the student really needs. And also because it's becoming an intervention class in the middle schools, we don't want to overpopulate those courses because then we're taking away from their elective opportunities and the strengths that they might have in, in other areas.
So when we've looked at programs in the past, we've, we haven't had a lot of updates on, on Read 180, but you know, there's been conversation, sometimes teachers, this is when we had Ed Committee and we had opportunities to do that, but you know, we'd hear how it was working for them or, I mean, continuing with this platform, with this program, which is being recommended, is also collaboratively supported by the educators that are working with this, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, they, you know, we've been using it for eight years now and they find, find it to be a very effective tool. And actually, we're actually removing the only ninth grade stipulation for reading access for our high school as well.
And what was the 44?
I'm, I'm sorry?
You, you, what was the?
System 44.
Yeah, what is System 44?
It is.
Please, sorry, I can't remember.
No, that's okay. It's a, it's a reading program that has a very similar platform, but we don't want to separate the two and have two different databases. So integrating it into the current platform for Read 180 would allow us to have all of our data in one spot.
And is that just for high school or is that nine through 12? Or what is that?
That is sixth through 12.
Sixth through 12?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Connor?
I guess I, one fundamental question, and I was relooking at the PDSA to see if it was there. And it uses the numbers for students by year. So in that PDSA, it looks like 1718, there was a total of 687 students in this? Is that correct? I'm on page two of the PDSA.
Yep.
Okay, because it says in 1314, there were 1,070 and now there's 687. And my understanding that that's the population that has used this program.
Yep, yes. The, that's the number of students that have been served and are actually able to get pre and post-test data.
I mean, I guess, I will just express and I, I know I don't always have everything straight on the education side, but I would expect in our district that those numbers would not have gone down that need this program. Or maybe I don't understand, is there a certain criteria? I mean, just frankly speaking, I mean, don't we have an issue with exactly this? So how is it that we have fewer students in this program? So I'm really, I struggled with that one, so help me understand on that.
So, so last year, we had the ELA reading block introduced into a couple of our middle schools. And that combined both the reading and the ELA classes. So there weren't kids taking the separate class for Read 180 and they were using a different reading structure inside those ELA blocks. So that reduced some of the numbers, but part of that has to do with the, the profile that we're looking at and making sure that the students who are taking the Read 180 classes, that that's the targeted instruction that they need.
So, and I, I really don't want to drag this out because I guess I should have put these questions on. What I'm wondering is that, I mean, we, we do spend a lot and, and I will just say that personally, and I've talked to a few other board members on this, I mean, reading is one of our key issues. So I guess the question in my, back of my mind is, you know, is it that we are tailoring to kids' needs and that's why we have several programs? Or I'm just, it's like, is this an opportunity to say, hey, you're having this upgrade? You're putting a gun to our head, frankly, to, to do this? You know, is this a good time to say, hey, everybody should be on this program or no, that doesn't really meet the kids' needs?
Well, one of the things that also happened a few years ago is they reduced the reading classes to just being offered in ninth grade in our high schools and we're opening that back up because we know that some students beyond ninth grade need help reading as well.
Yeah, I don't want to drag this out, but I really, I think this is one of the topics that maybe it's just me, I maybe like to understand better, you know, the options because it seems like we've got a lot of students that are below proficiency and continue to struggle. And one of the messages we keep hearing from the community is, you know, hey, we, you know, essentially pass kids on. Now, I'm not sure I think that that's really the case, but it does make me wonder. So just maybe on a personal follow-up, it would make sense for somebody to educate me on, you know, the various reading programs and how we're targeting. Because I'm not against spending money, particularly for reading. I think it's just, you know, I don't know how it all fits.
Right. And this isn't our only reading program, so that is important to know.
I do know that. That's, that's part of the question.
Right.
Is, you know, if it's, sorry, if we're targeting different students based on some criteria, I, I understand that. But it really would help me.
I think a great solution is Ms. Maisak and Ms. Dedman and some of the other team members could perhaps partner and we could put some follow-up in next week's weekly update and provide a greater context to our overall reading recovery strategies. I think part of the issue here was, as well as the tension between intervention programs, but also wanting students to have full access to grade level material and that perhaps we had been overusing a strategy to pull students away from core instruction. And so there's a tension there and, and we want to provide students and and more, not instead of. And so that may account for some of the numbers, but I think Ms. Maisak and her team will be very well-equipped to provide a little more robust explanation about the larger context of the work in a weekly update. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the similar, similar concern that I had was, okay, you're asking us to spend $350,000, you know, how many students are going to be impacted by that? Kind of like that return on investment discussion about what's the, what's the impact and how many students are going to be affected by that? And then how are we going to measure that it, you know, really gave us what we wanted? You know, that, so similar question, I guess. So you don't have to answer that, but you know, but that's, that's what's important to us is that if we're going to spend that much money, we need to know.
That it's the open results.
Is, who's going to use it? 900 kids, 1,000 kids, 500 kids, you know, whatever? And what, what's the outcome of what we expect to see in their improvement? Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I'll just add to both of those discussions. It would be really helpful to me too if we had some sort of comprehensive, because I hear these terms all the time, Read 180, integrated literacy, but I don't really have a good sense for what, who's doing what to whom, when. So it would be nice to have something comprehensive.
But you meant that in the nicest way.
I meant that in the nicest way. And then, so something you just said though, I got to ask the question. So if one of the reasons why the number of students has gone down is because a couple of the middle schools piloted the block, all of the middle schools are going to the block now. So what's going to happen to the numbers now?
Well, we are opening back up to all of high school, nine through 12. So, so right now, it's just ninth graders who are taking it. So we're, we're figuring that that will balance out some of the loss in the middle schools as they're getting more of their reading instructions in their ELA block.
And in the middle schools though, we'll also offer a little more flexibility in scheduling to have kids get the treatment really as a true intervention and that might only be for one semester or it might only be for two semesters because they are being recognized as needing in addition to their grade level reading and everybody will get grade level reading. And what we did in the past is if you didn't read, reach a certain cut score, your grade level reading was replaced by below grade level reading. And so this will be in, in addition to and just in time for students who need it as opposed to seeing them be in two, four and six semesters because they're never getting exposure to grade level reading instruction. And so we saw them persist on and on semester after semester. And Deb's done a significant data dive into who we're serving with this program, for how long and for whom it works. And what we found is if it isn't really making an impact after two semesters, they have more of a chance of being scheduled into that class again for four semesters and six and sometimes even beyond. And what we know then is we didn't get the profile right. And in the absence of grade level instruction, they've been kind of being served by this program, but it isn't truly meeting their needs. So I would say we will probably see the number of licenses be reduced. My explanation, my hypothesis is that we'll actually be seeing a more accurate use of the licenses for the students who need them as opposed to using only the cut score methodology to remove students from grade level reading. And that's really part of the solution for middle school reading and writing is that we're blocking reading and writing together as a best practice, offering grade level reading instruction to all and giving more to those who need it through the problem-solving process, through the local norming process and through multiple data points. And that will allow us to really identify if the treatment actually worked because they're getting all and.
So your reference to licenses, is this, do we pay per student for?
Correct.
Okay. So if we, if we have fewer students use it, it will cost less?
They hold on to our licenses. I believe that we, we pay for, we, every year we do, I guess, a right sizing, a right sizing of our licensing order. So the maximum that we have proposed right now is 600. That seems to be according to, you know, where we are, a, a right size moving into next year. We adjust based on need.
Okay. Thanks, McCollough.
And that was, my question was that the cost, the fiscal component to it, so that, this would be for 600 for this?
Middle school and sorry, 400 for high school. I was, I was wrong.
Oh, okay. So there's like 1,000 and then the following year, that will, you'll become, does it become a recurring contract for another $300,000 with an adjustment for the right sizing?
There are two pieces of the cost. One is the cost to upgrade to the new platform and the second is the annual licensing, which we've paid for eight years. We always have our, our maintenance costs every year. The big cost right now that we're asking for out of this year's budget is to upgrade the platform.
But we're also paying for the licenses.
But we're also paying for the licenses.
We also will have licenses coming through, yes.
What part of this is the licensing? What part of this is the upgrade? It must be on there, and I'm...
It is, and I can't...
I'm looking at the contract right here, and I'm like, okay, not a lawyer.
I'm not opposed, I'm just getting an understanding, and you can always send it to us.
Let's do that. Mr. Dixon, you have a question?
Yeah, so, in the past, we have students that read under grade level. We worked with them where they were at. And so, with this, you're saying that we're going to give them the grade level plus still work with them where they're at. And then, eventually, we're going to, hopefully, they would meet grade level.
Correct.
I guess, what is, I guess, has there been any research or proof that that's happened?
In terms of that that's a best practice?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that really was the foundation of the English Language Arts CLT, the Curriculum Leadership Team. They had a really big decision to make, which is, do we continue down the path of separating reading and writing? And then, on the reading side of things, separating grade level from non-grade level? Or do we integrate what's best practice and what does research support? And research supports an integrated model with additional time for intervention.
And Read 180 itself is an evidence-based intervention program that is meant to help supplement grade-level reading instruction.
And is that for secondary or elementary?
Secondary.
You know what, so, the elementary...
So, in elementary, you know, we have Reading Horizons Discovery.
Gotcha.
Yep, that's our foundational phonics program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. This will come back to us for a vote.
Thank you.
We'll make sure we follow up with the weekly update.
Okay. Any other business for tonight? Can I ask Mr. Rollins?
So, I just want to follow up on something that we talked about previously.
Okay.
Which is an example of, so, we have one initiative where we recognize the importance of arts in the schools, and we want kids involved in the arts. We have another initiative where we want to implement academies with fidelity, and sometimes the two different initiatives might not, might conflict, okay? And I, this is an issue that I've heard about for a couple of years now, and I'd like to have some discussion at some point about how we can get those two initiatives or those two goals to interact with each other in a way that they don't conflict with each other. So, can we have that at some point?
Okay.
What do you mean by a discussion? Wouldn't we review next year's course catalog, perhaps?
Whenever you think that discussion should be had, but, you know, my, my concern is, so, we have these isolated silo discussions, you know?
Right.
Ms. French comes in and talks about academies, and Ms. Spurling comes in and talks about fine arts, and, and I'm just identifying that we seem to have this issue where the academies seem to be creating a barrier to kids moving from middle school to high school fine arts, and we should have a discussion at some point about how to, how to solve that.
Absolutely. I think as we talk about next year's course catalog in the fall is the time to do that because those decisions have been made for this year's set of offerings, but I think that would be a very appropriate conversation.
Mrs. Dedman?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Any other business for tonight? Now, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Sir, second? All right. All those in favor, say aye. We'll save time. We're adjourned at 9:15.